All right, welcome everyone. It's our monthly workshop meeting for the Board of Commissioners in Springfield Township. As folks probably are aware, this is where we go through the the issues before us in as much detail as we can. And then our Wednesday business meeting, we will take any official action on those items. Commissioner Ratzavong is out of town, is not with us this evening. We are expecting Commissioner Cobb. And Craig, do we have any Zoomers? Okay, no Zoomer, really low attendance today, so.
July.
Okay, we typically start with matters of our engineer, which we will do. And then if there's anyone in the audience that has this particular issue, we'll try to address that first. So Tim, why don't we start with you?
Great, thank you, Mr. Lee. Just some really updates tonight. I don't think anything earth shattering. Mount St. Joe's Academy has been quiet for a bit. We just heard from them the last couple of weeks. I've got some escrow numbers to approve and get to Andy for the creation of the development agreements and financial security documents, stormwater management, operations and maintenance agreements, those kinds of things. But it looks like they are getting ready to go and we'll be finalizing that paperwork. In conjunction with the map, we received the PennDOT Highway occupancy permit to install that handicap ramp on the Mount St. Joe's side of West Hickam. And Mike reached back to the county, gave them another opportunity to help fund this ramp. And at the present time, they've kind of said no, pretty pretty aggressively said no, I think Mike would be a way to put it. So we'll put that value in the Mount account. And hopefully in next, you know, months, the county will see the light and perhaps once they are underway, work with us again to get that ramp installed.
And if not, the approval resolution contains a provision where they can't, Mount St. Joe's can't take occupancy of the new fieldhouse until such time as the ramp and the trail are completed. So it'll fall back to them.
Back to them.
They had it covered both ways.
The cost will fall back to.
To the mount, yeah.
And what about the receiving side?
Yeah, the receiving side is part of the county program. Which was always odd to us, Jim. I don't know why the county designed and had permitted a ramp on Erdenheim Farm's side of the intersection, but nothing on the Mount side. It's a very odd permit.
So wait, yeah, that's already there?
Well, it's in, it's in the design of the trail connection, the Crest County Trail.
Right, but that sounds like it wouldn't be influenced here.
Correct.
So we're gonna have one going to nowhere? And is the county okay with that? Will prove that?
PennDOT. Not to the county, it's up to PennDOT and PennDOT approve them both individually, which is extremely rare. We can't figure out how that happened because normally you do one side, PennDOT says, oh, you will do the other side.
Other side as well, right?
And that's why we went back to, we raised the issue before and said, are you sure about this? And that's what started all this.
So per PennDOT, they're okay with us constructing our side and having it in approved, ready to go?
Yeah, it's just the reverse of what was gonna happen before.
Right.
Because the county was gonna build theirs before we ever got to bounce into anything on their side. And it was gonna send them without a receiving fee.
But that is a true, true statement, like for sure.
Okay.
If anyone's been out on Avondale, we are underway with our storm sewer project. Did some saw cutting two weeks ago. Plymar was in the day with the beginnings of that storm sewer installation. We have not heard any adverse concerns from neighbors. I think we did a fairly decent job. Ian and Plymar notifying those neighbors that the project was coming along. We responded to a couple of questions, but I think as far as we know, that's moving ahead without incident. If you guys hear anything, please let us know and we'll respond straight away. Walnut Trail Phase Two. Recall that we've been in discussions with SEPTA, with DEP, with Army Corps of Engineers, with Planning Commission. Everyone has kind of signed off on the concept but for PennDOT, who owns a piece of ground where they did a wetland mitigation project. And we've been having a difficult time getting a hold of anybody at PennDOT to respond to our request. I think we finally found the right person in their environmental unit. So we've been trading some emails. They are reviewing our proposed trail location as we speak. So hopefully we'll get that permission straight away and be able to come up with a design and get that project implemented. Jonathan, I have not heard back from the county with regard to the Valley Green Road Bridge and reuse of that. I was kind of waiting to push that button until after we heard back from PennDOT to make sure that we had a project. And then once we do, we can circle back with the county and see what they're doing with that bridge. Emily has reached out. We got word from the County Conservation District that there's grant funding available for turf conversion to meadow grasses. Emily has looked at this as a possible solution for some of the work or some of the areas of Mermaid as well as Folgenetti. Areas that we pay to maintain that might better serve us as meadow grasses. At the same time, we're looking for other stormwater pollution reduction credits. Meadow glasses, grasses would help with that. And Folgenetti certainly may be a stream bank restoration project similar to what we did at Mermaid last summer, as well as to reinforce that riparian buffer. So all kind of good things happening over both of these, both of these parks. We didn't want to move too far ahead or too quickly ahead with that conversation without talking to the board about it. Again, it'd just be a grant application, no obligation to do anything at this point. But just putting in the, the applications and exploring the stormwater credits we would get for enhancing that riparian buffer.
And I'm sure Emily's aware, but you know, some of those parks are used for certain.
Yeah, and that. That's what we were talking about, Jonathan, is what areas of both parks are we should be set aside for active recreation? And what sections of those parks may be better served with a more naturalized condition? So I think we're gonna defer to Emily for that answer. But I think she saw opportunities at both, both locations to pursue anyway.
And like any other park improvement project that comes before the board, we would go to Parks and Rec Advisory Committee first. Give it a public forum for the residents in the area to comment on it. And then it would come before this board of the Park and Rec Advisory Committee thinks it's a good idea. For the riparian area, we met on site with the guy from the Conservation District. They're talking like 35 feet from the, the top of the bank. So it wouldn't preclude, you know, the use of the park in its entirety. It just, you know, would create that buffer area immediately and change it to the stream.
Doesn't the sewer line run?
There is a
It does.
parallel with the stream? So we'd probably take out like trees possibility, but we would shrubs and other.
Yep, there's also, there's some stream bank there, Pete, that is very heavily eroded. That, you know, that kind of potentially jeopardizes some of that sandstorm infrastructure. So kind of armoring that back would be a good.
Bucks County Water and Sewer would be interested in seeing some improvement there, yeah.
Agreed, yes.
Tim, Mike had mentioned in his memo about grants and the Conservation District would have access to that. Is that through them or what, what grant program would apply?
Yeah, well, I guess the, it comes from DCNR, I believe, but they're they've allowed the County Conservation Districts to administer that grant program. And so this particular grant money is, I guess, being administered by the folks in, in Lower Providence, Allen Level Road, the County Conservation District.
We would apply through to the Conservation District.
That's correct.
And that's why we kind of brought that name in for, not only because they're the gatekeepers to the money, but they have that expertise and they even have some equipment that they can loan out to help do some seed for that kind of thing.
Correct. Our no-till drill. So instead of ripping everything up to plant, it actually punctures the soil and puts the seed in. So it's much less invasive way to convert turf grass into meadow.
Are you pleased with the progress that they're making at the Townhomes of Pennybrook?
Yeah, Pete, I am, you know. Certainly sidewalk is kind of done along halls, still closed as they are actively working above that sidewalk. But I think all the infrastructure is in and it's looking pretty good as far as we can see. They're in sequence with their permits. The school district still owes us an answer as to whether they would like for us to connect the open space walking trail to the school.
I think that sits with the two solicitors at the moment.
Is that where it is?
Yeah, I'm waiting, I'm waiting to hear back from the school district solicitor as to, you know, what the plan is out there.
Yeah, yeah, it's almost a natural connection, I mean, I would think, but.
I would agree, Pete. But I guess there is, you know, some sense of being able to control access a little bit too. And I think that was the discussion that was going back and forth between the district and Andy.
The only big issue that I have seen or just concerned with is I, I thought that the parking area for the public park part of it was going, was not going to be macadam. And it appears as if it has been macadam.
It was, it was asphalt in the plant, Pete, it was.
It was asphalt in the plant, okay. I thought it was like
Because of the great gravel. We were concerned with runoff.
Runoff, okay.
Into the Halls Lane during a rain event.
And debris and erosion and.
So that's gonna be managed.
We would prefer to have all of our parking areas paid, just for good housekeeping, you know, from being a mess, but it's expensive.
And if WB is gonna pay for it, we're gonna have them do it, yeah.
Has the basin been put in yet?
It has, yes. It's still serving its function as an erosion control facility, so it hasn't taken its final configuration yet, Jonathan. But it certainly, it's in, the berms are in, the exterior slopes are seeded and actually grass is growing. The interior of that basin is still holding a lot of silt and debris as it's supposed to while the site is disturbed. And once they get everything stabilized, they'll clean that all out and add all the amended soils and wetlands plantings and stuff.
To the best of your knowledge, all the tree work has basically, the big tree work has been done.
Correct.
They're not taking any more trees.
That is correct.
But as it stands today, that basin is larger than what existed previously?
Yeah, well, there was nothing previously, so.
I mean, even with all the rain stuff, the hog should see.
In improvement. Absolutely. Cause I don't know if you recall, but we had them oversized that basin as part of the settlement agreement with the township. They had an obligation to do over and above what their minimum obligation otherwise would have been. And so that basin is doing a pretty good job out there with all.
And I'm just curious, cause we, it was years ago now, but when we had the homeowners lived across the street from the school were complaining about, you know, water running down and then driveway. I'm just hoping that with that more attention further uphill.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure we solved every problem of drainage on Halls Lane, but this certainly will go a long way to helping improve.
That was pretty far down.
Yeah, yeah, that was, but that was street, that was street.
That was street because they're.
They had no curbs or something down there, yeah.
Driveway depression was low.
Yeah, below street, below, almost at street level. So yeah, everything worked down.
We built them, we built like a little curve.
We did, we did, a little bit, yeah.
Curve was reconstructed to be higher and keep the order in the street.
And what's the progress vis a vis the middle school project?
Yeah, coming along nicely, Pete. You know, the, the obviously the first thing you, you got that's happening, you don't see this underground basins are going in, all the underground utilities are going in. I'm not quite sure when they plan to go vertical, but, but not before long, yeah, it'll be coming up out of the ground soon.
Starting to open for, for the next school year?
I think 2027. Yeah, so not this season.
Or 27?
Yeah, the fall of 26.
School year, okay, okay.
Tim, were you looped in on the issue they were having Pico with the underground line that was?
Oh, at the school?
Yeah.
I am not.
Do you know about that, Mike?
I do not.
When they were, they found a line that was not identified as existing. I think it was a gas line.
Hmm, okay.
So they they were scrambling to get Pico. The guys on site said it would be like several weeks for a proposal to be made, but.
Pico is rough with that gas line stuff. They really are, but.
Sounds like Napoleon Nelson's office. Got someone involved.
Could maybe help expedite that a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was not aware of that one. No, Jim. Great. I'll call, see what we can find.
Maybe they just wanted to try to resolve it.
Yeah. Perfect.
Was that in the vicinity of the new addition? Is that where that was or in another location of the campus?
Well, I know it would affect, if it wasn't resolved quickly, it would affect them being open with their drop off plans. They would have had to make you figure that.
Wonder if it was around that, the backside of the.
Yeah, it sounds like it was part of that drop off area, yeah.
Cause I know there's a small outbound addition over in that area.
Yeah.
Great, guys. That's what I had this evening. Don't have any questions. Awesome, super. Thank you, Tim. Thank you very much.
Thank you, well, thank you.
Have a great summer. See you in a couple of weeks.
That's right.
All right, very good. All right, we can just jump into it. Jane, do you have any particular items you want to hit first?
No.
Well, this is the place to be.
That's it, as you can see.
Climate control.
Yeah.
Yes. No glitches if your internet goes out? Sophia, any, any preferences on agenda items? That we should go to first? All right, no pressure. Well, then we'll start today. Burton Road, the, the neighbors are concerned there. I obviously don't see anyone here. John, do you know the current status of that?
Yeah. I think between you know, a sense of the summertime and some of our initial overtures as far as the sign and possibly redoing the initial traffic study. We want to kind of get that feedback.
Okay. So we'll do that, Mike, and then if they want to circle back.
Probably, what I'm, what I'm anticipating is it'll be September if, if, if we're back.
Okay. Okay, great, sounds good.
But in the interim, do we engage in a traffic study or do we?
It's, I mean, you're liable to have less traffic now based upon the lack of school traffic. You also have people away on vacation.
Right.
Probably cuts both ways. I mean, if you think it's the same number of people who are gonna be.
Yeah, and the only concern is summertime kids are playing and they're at the ARs and they're on the streets and stuff, but is there a way to get more enforcement? More.
So the struggle with that is like they, they, they try and put the manpower where they identify the problems. So with this being the last traffic study not showing that there's a significant problem, it's not a priority area. They're putting it where you know, the, the study data suggests that they need it. They did have the radar sign out there and they'll rotate that through there. You know, we could do the study, see what the, the results are. And then if, you know, the neighbors question it and he wants to do another one in the fall, we could do another one. I don't know whether you're suggesting that it would be better now or later.
I think the consensus was later.
Okay.
You're definitely in for traffic later. It's a whole different story.
But in the interim, just because the kids are out of bed, there's something. It's kind of like, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, and I think met with the resident who contacted you because he, he was putting out the radar sign. He came out and he, he talked to Ed and had talked to him. And I think he said that he was gonna try and, you know, monitor the area just on regular routine patrol business today. Yeah. We can see if they can do additional enforcement. I don't know if it's gonna result in a whole lot, but they can. Yeah, I'll see if they get that some time there.
Sounds good. All right, item B. Amy Salmon is up for renewal on a term of service for the Civil Service Commission. Beth, I know you sit on the commission. You want to be the one to reach out to her? All right, tab C is the zoning text amendment, the ordinance for the small cell wireless facilities. If you recall, we reviewed this ornament, ordinance. And I guess on Wednesday, we're announcing the public hearing date for, for August.
Yeah.
And then we'll do the advertisement in July with possible enactment at our August meeting. So we, we reviewed the ordinance before. I know there was I think a couple of slight recommendations from the county. Just for some definitions.
Andy.
Yeah.
And that was incorporated?
Well, we, we decided not to change the definitions because I, I think the definitions in this small wireless ordinance comes straight from Act 50. And so instead of going into the general defined terms section and creating new definitions, we, we decided it's best just to keep these highly specific definitions in this new ordinance and make them only apply to this new ordinance. We didn't think that any of the, the changes were too significant, but we didn't want to deviate too much from Act 50 and, and what the state legislature gave us in terms of defined terms.
Okay, great. And for folks just curious, there was a, an act that was passed by the state in 2001, was it? That enabling legislation for these small wireless facilities and in order to collect fees and have some regulatory control over that, we need to have our own local legislation in place. And this, this ordinance does that. And to date, we have not, we don't have any of these
Correct.
installed per that act, but we do have an application for, for one.
We have an application that was submitted twice thus far and was found to be deficient both times and returned to the applicant. So Mark is very deliberate in his review. And we reviewed it in compliance with Act 50 as well as our local ordinances. This particular ordinance just combines both for ease of convenience and ease of review for everybody. Plus it sets for the application fees and the right of way management sheet that we're entitled to.
Okay.
And so we're hoping to have that placed before they give us that application number three?
Once it's advertised, it's subject to it.
Okay.
Yep.
Do they have it submitted a third time?
No, no, they were just packaged with, returned to them last week.
Any other questions or comments on that ordinance? Very good. All right, on to the manager's report. Mr. Taylor, get away.
Okay. So last month, we had a spirited discussion about electric landscaping equipment. And at the end of the the time of the discussion, we were informed by members of the EAC who were here that there was gonna be a battery powered landscaping equipment workshop that was gonna be happening in Lower Marion Township on June 16th. So the fleet supervisor and myself went and we attended. We talked with a lot of people from Lower Marion Township, but has a full entire landscaping crew that uses nothing but electric equipment. And we, we talked to them about what worked, what didn't work. It didn't learn a whole lot that wasn't new. Although we did learn that if you're gonna start investing in this stuff, go with the manufacturer that has been around for a while. And one that utilizes technology that when you get a newer battery, it will work on old equipment as opposed to changing the battery types all the time. So on the recommendation of Lower Marion, we went and we spent a lot of time with the steel landscape equipment guy. They, they had that, there was like four or five different manufacturer reps. And this particular individual is gonna stop by and sort of give a demonstration to our, our guys. And he's gonna drop off some equipment that we can test for a period of two to three, four weeks. So we'll see how it performs in real life scenario. The one concern we had, remember we had that backpack blower here that was really, really heavy.
Yeah.
They had a couple of their backpack blowers there that actually were, I won't say they were lighter, but the center of gravity for the batteries were in a different position. So it made a world of difference where it's at. We'll see what, what, what.
It's good that they're giving us the the equipment to try out, have the guys. You know, work with it.
Yeah.
Did, um, does Lower Marion use the blowers? I know that was the, the one that's.
They do. And, and if you sat through the workshop, you were, that was their complaint, was that the blowers don't last, that they don't, you know, they're not powerful enough.
And they suck up battery.
They suck up the battery, they're heavy. They did say that the string trimmers work pretty well. The chainsaws work well for like little pruning jobs when you're like trying to take a low branch and take that out. But if you have a big tree that falls down and that you're blocking the street, you gotta go to a gas power.
Like they're just, sure, you know.
Not there for it yet. What else did they say weren't too well? There was two items that worked pretty well. One that was so sad, which is the chainsaws and then the backpack blowers are in.
Throw, throw.
Flashlights. Nah, not flashlights. I forget what it was.
Did they, did they bring out mowers too?
Actual mowers. There were mowers there, yeah, the sit on ones.
Yeah.
That, you know, they're pretty costly. Steel doesn't make them yet. But there was a Greenworks one. There was a again with a R, get the name of the company.
Oh, right, right.
That wasn't Ryobi. It was another one. It was more of a bigger company.
So our plan will be to start small with the, with the handheld.
With the things that we like. That's immediately what we have to replace right now. That's our immediate interest, so. Yeah.
Did you see Mr. Ford?
He was not there. His absence was noted as well, because I spoke to their sustainability director. I said, where's Brandon? She said, oh, I thought he'd be here as well. He was not there.
And is any township using any sort of automated wood mowers or drone type mowers that just go out and do it?
A lot of golf courses.
Yeah.
Golf courses.
Yeah. But that's gotta be coming.
I'm sure it is.
But I mean, again, that, we had this conversation now, but to be real cautious. Let me, you know.
Robots.
Yeah.
Like really a robot.
Yeah.
Yeah, robot commissioners. Powered by Grok.
Hey, uh. Next thing is open space. Next month, the Environmental Advisory Commission has requested an opportunity to meet with the board and talk about their subcommittee work that they've done. They're gonna put forth four recommendations. One is to maintain the list of open space that they've assembled. Consider action on high priority, urgent open space parcels. They have a toolkit, various different tools, for lack of a better word, that you can use to try and address open space issues as they come before you. And then final recommendation is to create a township green space advisory committee. And that committee might or may not consist of members from the existing advisory committees, just so that they all kind of like communicate with one another. So you'll learn more about that next week or next month.
Great.
Solar project, we had a pre-bid meeting that was well attended. Was led by Wilson Engineering, which as you remember is the engineering company that we're getting for free from the state via a grant that Joy put us onto. We had nine different potential bidders that showed up. We walked all the rooftops on the, the buildings that'll have the solar placed on them hopefully. And they were given an opportunity to ask questions and a deadline for their RFIs. The RFP must be pretty good because we didn't get any submitted in writing. We had some questions that were asked during the day of, but nothing significant. The bids will be open this Friday at 10 o'clock.
Do we have any idea whether these were gonna be bids on, you know, the, the actual applications versus a power purchase power agreement or?
So there were, the majority of the attendees were those who were installers. There were a couple who were there that we presumed were power purchase agreement people.
Okay.
People who would provide the funding. They're permitted to submit in one or both ways.
Okay.
When they submit their applications.
Okay.
We'll see.
Yep.
More to come on that. We talked about the meadow conversions. It's Tim. Emergency management, we had an emergency management tabletop exercise. You probably read about that in chief pickers report, hall report. And here, basically it's, it's a an exercise to try and plan for and address emergency management issue. The scenario that they provided was a hurricane similar to Superstorm Sandy that hit the area. And what, what happens is the moderator, I guess you would call it, will, will go around and he'll drop a pile of information in front of each of the tables. One for each of the three fire companies, the ambulance provider, police department, public works, administration. And we each have a different item that we have to deal with and then work with one another to address it or address it independently. So it seemed to work well. Everybody worked well with one another and kind of opportunity to see how everybody works. So Craig was there. I know you weren't. Say anything more about?
No, everything went, went pretty well on it. As you said, you had representation from pretty good representation from all three fire companies, the ambulance company, public works. There was quite a, quite a few police there as well, so. Check it out.
The next one that they'll consider doing is an operations based one, which is almost like a real life scenario type thing in the field.
Yep.
Last time we did one, it was at the high school.
That was a while ago.
That was a.
That was a long time.
We had, you know, fake dead bodies and all kinds of stuff, right? I remember that one, yeah, that was good.
Is that something we want to make sure is happening or supported? On an ongoing basis, I mean, Mitch had been so long and you have so much turnover.
Oh, yeah, sure, yeah, sure.
Yeah, actually don't have as much turnover as some places may have, you know, obviously our fire marshal turned over. More recently than not, the police have been pretty consistent, the fire chiefs and leadership in each of them are pretty consistent. Everybody seems to kind of. Know what they need to do, but it's it's still good training. I'm not aware of anybody that does one every year, you?
No, the county. The county offers them quite a few times a year as well, and they do them like on a weekend. And then on the western end of the county. They do a drill for the nuclear power plant every year, which is required for Exlon to do that for by the NRC Nuclear Regulatory Commission. By they do a biannual exercise every year, so we're. We're pretty, you know, in depth doing that because we have representation from FEMA and PMA sitting in there doing the evaluations as well. So the county does do that does do them on a regular basis as well, but this one here is just basically for the township.
So let's say you do like an operations based one next year, do you do the you? Practicing the same scenario or you pick a different?
No, they'll do a different scenario.
So what would be? I know you've probably been part of a bunch of these.
Mass casualty then, something, something like that, or you have to distribute some sort of. You know. Any type of medication or something like that, if there's any act of terrorism or anything like that, just having people come through there. The county actually has a pop storage pod set up that you can basically set up a drive through center to go ahead and give like shots or something like that. They have them a place all throughout the county as well, so you're gonna do pretty much any type of scenario.
In your experience, like what's the best practice for how often you do it? Like you mentioned, maybe not every?
Every every, do do a larger one, probably like at least once every five years.
And then a tabletop one every?
Every, yeah, every every other year or something like that, just do something to keep everybody.
I think our last one over here was a tanker truck that overturned like a high school.
That was that was the operations based one?
Yeah.
But it had to be ten years ago.
Oh, it's more than that.
Yeah.
That was that was Pete's scenario too.
What's that?
Truck going off three hundred and nine into the new.
New wing of the middle.
That was where his concern.
I don't think we should do that for the next one.
You know, you know, new undiscovered gas line.
Next item is the the Fourth of July parade, I'm sure some of you clearly attended the parade.
Indeed.
Others of you have an opportunity, you may have noticed we brought three of our public works parks out to be. Service more beefed up barricade at some of the critical intersections. You recall that White Marsh Township was gonna cancel their parade earlier this year. It was because they they felt that they weren't gonna be able to adequately protect the crowds and the parade goer. Dispants. They ultimately came up with a plan that probably included public works vehicles. We got noticed that Upper Double was gonna utilize three of their trash trucks. At three intersections, mostly along Pennsylvania Avenue and then at the start of the parade. So our emergency management team thought it would probably be a good idea to put them in some of our higher profile intersections. It'll cost you a little bit in overtime bringing the guys out and we had. Not really planned for it, so we had kind of put the word out at the last minute for our guys. So fortunately we found three guys who were willing to come in. Hopefully worked out. Coffee with the cop, Coffee with the Cop has returned. That will be this Wednesday, July ninth, from nine AM to eleven AM at the Starbucks inside the Giant Supermarket. So if anybody wants to stop out, chat with the police officer or two, that'll be an opportunity. I know she pick goes usually there, Lieutenant Marskey. And whoever's on. Will be there as well, so stop in and say hi.
They mention anything about the next one, like how often they want to do these?
They did not, yeah. Along those lines, National Night Out will be returning this year as well, and that is on the.
Harold come up for the ice cream and dogs?
Probably not.
At the same same setup?
Yeah, gonna do it here. And Sergeant Whitney has agreed to organize it along with his team. Didn't talk about Avenue Road. Rec Center, some of you are. Who've been participating on the Rec Center Advisory Committee. We're gonna accompany us on a tour of the Doylestown Township Recreation Center, which is close to opening. That's gonna be this Thursday at ten o'clock. Anybody else wants to come along, free, you know, feel free to pop on over, we'll carpool it up. That's at ten o'clock.
You're leaving here at ten o'clock?
Yep. Well, no, ten o'clock up there, we're gonna leave here beforehand.
Okay.
By nine thirty. So the the Doylestown building is. Utilizes two pre engineered metal buildings that are put together with conventional construction in the middle. And Royal Construction heard some of the concerns about the cost of the center that. You know, they provided to us and so you could probably save some money if you utilize a pre engineered building, maybe you wanna take a look and see what that looks like. Downside to it is it probably takes away a second story and a walking track. Because it really isn't feasible to walk the track around the basketball court with all the back and forth that goes on, so. Might have to make some decisions, you know. Emily also reached out and found. Some other locations that utilize pre engineered buildings for their facilities. So that might be something that we're going to look at in the future. This looks promising. It's, there's a Hatfield company, company that's located in Hatfield Township that builds them. They build a number of them in the area. Somebody to even meet with and, you know, get some ideas with, you know. On the cheap. They want to sell you a building. Tank car property, we, on the ninetieth day, which is their required response. We got a response to our revised active remedial investigation and cleanup plans from the property. They brought up four comments, two of which are entirely new and are. Environmental engineers. Pretty upset, I would say, like, you know, that they didn't bring these up before. One of them is we we didn't. Sample the fill that was brought on site from this facility and from the high school. But we provided clean fill certifications, so we can't figure out why that wasn't untested. The other thing is there there was cobalt that was detected in some of the groundwater monitoring. All throughout the whole process and they never raised an issue about it, but now all of a sudden they want us to characterize it in comparison to EPA's model. So.
Is it high?
I mean, it's above the limits, but it it's not what the benzene level was. And and, you know, it hasn't been one of the comments in the past where they've said you need to provide evidence of. Four consecutive quarters of stabling or decreasing levels. It's just a new thing, new requirement, so.
Could we have used those same testing wells the whole time?
Probably. So. We're gonna meet with our environmental engineer and environmental attorney. Come up with a game plan and the DEP to their credit has offered to meet with us. In a video conference before we submit any kind of a written response or something, so. More to come on that, I mean, we're getting closer, we only have four items, so. Take every one we can get. Then talked about Mouncy Joe's. Storm events. Everybody's familiar with the storm event that happened on June eight. Late afternoon thunderstorm, brought high winds, heavy rain. We had a number of power outages, downed trees. It was a real mess, very expensive storm. There were. A great number of people without power initially after the storm. Pico brought a number of them back online, but there were some extended power outages, Commissioner. Nate was among them for a few days. In the aftermath, there were some very small pockets of people, usually ten or fewer. Customers who were extended into the following week, Tuesday, Wednesday, I think. Before they got power back. And and that's the nature of these storms, you know, when. There's the small groups of people who are out and it's a big repair, they're gonna go less, unfortunately. So I know Commissioner Wilson heard from some folks who said, you know, we need to do more. I provided in your packets tonight, Pico's preparedness plan for the summer of twenty twenty five. Jim asked if I would send it out to you in electronic form and I will do so. They they spent a ton of money on their resiliency plan and that includes new poles, new lines, a lot of vegetation removal. Bad storms and, you know, you can't predict where they're gonna hit, where they're gonna be, we're set to have another one tomorrow. Who knows what that's gonna be?
If we wanted to invite. Like a Generac or a. Generator company that maybe could do something like, you know, look. We'll present on Community Day or we'll have a table at Night Out and if anybody signs up during a twenty four hour, forty hour period after that. And we'll do a group discount. Can we do something like that for Community Day or? Night Out? Or is it weird to have?
We we've never had for profit vendors at Community Day.
Now, we've never had Community Day as a thing where you can sell anything, the point was always, you know, it's.
They have tables and their sponsors are for profit. I mean, there's contractors there, there's full profit companies.
Well, that's yes, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they give out information, but they don't, you know, take sales orders like. A lot of times you'll see like Bath Fitter there, you know, and or PJ Fitzpatrick and they're trying to sell you. A new bathtub or so, or Anderson Windows is there, we try and get your name and number so they can go and make a sales call. Try not to do that, allow like, BQ Basements was a big sponsor for years and they would give out the information, but. They didn't really take information from people. So, I mean, it's something that can be done. If you're okay with it. We get a lot of applications for generators, people go out and do it on their own. Just because they don't want. You know, they want that peace of mind, you know.
You know, it it does, it does seem that we have. Reoccurring pockets of. Outages, you know, if the wind blows more than twenty miles an hour. Half the folks on the four hundred block of Avondale lose their power. You know, I don't know why, but. I mean, it's just. Avondale, I'm sorry, no, no, Atwood, 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 yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, and that's, for whatever reason, when those storms did. We get a ton of tree damage along those creeks that run back there. And that's where all the power lines run, so that's why all the power comes out, like I think the winds just follow those creekways and just take them all down. Because, you know.
And they're long, they're long lines too.
Yeah. They're long lines and they're they're hard to get to, to get the power restored.
Yes, 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 yes.
There was, there was a lot of talk at the EAC about this as well, which, you know. I guess. People mobilized a lot of people and they put a lot of. Time and money into new poles and new lines, but I think. Yeah, it just seems like these storms are becoming more and more frequent. And. It kind of seems like Pennywise and Pat Foolish should be investing in lines and poles. When you probably solve this problem by taking stuff underground. As it happens all over. Is there any conversation ongoing with Pico? I mean, yeah, because I'm sure it's not like Springfield Township gets to dictate Pico about. Anything wrong, but you know, if there's, you know, more of a statewide effort to try and influence them that way, I mean, because. In the near term, it's probably, you know, just very immediately, it's cheaper to keep doing it this piecemeal way, but like. Eventually, they're gonna spend so much money constantly repairing things like. Investing in something that's gonna be more resilient. Have to make sense of something.
So. They claim. That the aerial system. Has fewer problems than the underground system. I live in the development with all underground electric, but we're fed from an aerial. Zone, so. You know, we lost power twice during the last storm. We got a backlog sooner than you did, so I'm not complaining, you know, harder there, but it's not foolproof. And in the Susie section of the the town. Carlisle Marshall Sessions of Patton Road, Pico just went through, not some newer section of. Development compared to most of the town, like I'll say that that's like sixties and seventies that that was probably built, as opposed to forties and fifties in a lot of the town. They just had to replace all of the underground electric in that that neighborhood over the last couple of years. So I don't know which one's better or not. And then the other problem that they've explained when we brought this up in the past is that most of our neighborhoods are all fed from the rear. Right, so you don't have to look at the poles in the front of the house. If they put in underground, they're gonna put in underground in the public right of way in front. But everybody's electric service is in the back. So they have to figure out a way to get the electric service from the front to the rear. And then the question is, who pays for that? Is that the customer? Is that? Pico that gets that in? So it's, it's.
It's maybe tearing driveways.
Yeah.
How is that? How unusual is? This high percentage of rear yard fed services? Do we have an unusually high percentage?
I don't know.
You mean compared to other townships?
Yeah.
I think it's generational. Yeah, yeah, it's, you know.
As a first generation suburb, we probably have a lot of them. But it's, you know, depends upon the section of the town. You know, the older boroughs probably have a lot of front fed poles along.
Right, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think if you probably go back and look at the planning requirements of the township, it it was probably a requirement. That that they not have poles on the street side, yeah, just for to make it look nicer, you know, so. And unfortunately, that, you know, that was probably fine forty years ago, but now the the trees that were, you know. This diameter. This diameter now, when they go down, they take a lot with them.
At the retro in twenty twenty, we. Our Hundredfield Pine Tree knocked out.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I'm sure, yeah, yeah.
It was landed on my daughter.
The gardens, we've lost a lot, we lost power all the time, because of all the short trees and everything around in the rear yards.
So we. For new developments, we we require underground by our own.
But they're all fed by. You know, above ground, high tension wires on the street usually.
Yeah, our subdivision of Land Works requires all the utilities. And likely has since the sixties, seventies, you know, when there's neighborhood, neighborhood I was just talking about, we're built.
Mike, can I ask you a question about full lane and charging areas?
Sure.
There's some chatter about it. At what point do we? Advertise that or make that available in the library or in the places, or do we typically not do that when we have a. Certain number of folks out in the township.
So. I think what you're asking is when would we stand up a either a cooling center or a. A warming center, you know, for lack of a better term for it. The the answer is emergency management usually like dictates that. In this particular instance, the library was open every day for the duration of the outages. And, you know. We didn't necessarily call attention to it, but it was open. So I guess, you know, if we had done that, we could have. I resisted the urge to tell Pico that we had it because they actually asked. Because then they're gonna put it out on their website, we're gonna get people from all over the place to come in. And then, you know, for a period of time, our library was on backup power. Because we were without power this whole entire area and there's only a limited number of outlets that work on the generator. So they were flooded with people and they're not always accessible either, so they were flooded with people that wanted to come in and. Use the charge, once we were back up and running on regular power, it was less of an issue because there's more outlets around. But, yeah, the answer usually comes from the emergency management.
And would we ever, even just on like the township's private Facebook page? Say that, say like, okay, the library's up and running and is open till nine tonight if anybody needs.
I think we did, didn't we? Didn't we have it on that?
I don't know that we did on the initial one, I think that we did say the library is open. We just said the library is open from X to X today.
In the email. Update, right, for people that are signed up for.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Is there any possible coordination with school district and their buildings in case of emergency?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's in our emergency, uh, management plan, uh, if we have the need to open it up.
I mean, that would be the logical place if you had. If we needed.
Big groups, yeah, real big group.
And, and a lot of times what we found in the past is that most people will find a family member or somebody like a neighbor or somebody else that's got power, rather than going and sitting in an auditorium and kind of like looking around, like, because you have to entertain if you're gonna have there. Um, you, you, you do something, wifi or.
Auditions are, yeah.
It's just the nature of, you know, uh, I can recall we, in a, in a storm in the winter, one time we opened up, uh, the old building. You know, the, and nobody really came. Like, we had the TV set up. To do that.
No, didn't you get that one year? Like, nobody was there for it?
Emily's in charge of entertainment now, probably a better act this time. Charlie wasn't so good at that.
So getting back to your initial question, I guess, we should all be aware of, and curious of it. At what point does it get to the point of, we're gonna say, all right, we need a bigger solution, you know, open around the clock? Is that something that emergency management would make the call on?
I would imagine if we were in one of those like red zone, like when, when it's very cold out and that they have one of those red zone.
Oh, yeah, cold blue.
Cold blue or on the, on the other side, like it was like a great. Wouldn't we do something like that? Wouldn't we be mandated to do something?
Uh, I don't know that we would be mandated. I mean, we would make that call on our own. Uh, well, the county's not gonna mandate us to do something.
That's why we have an emergency, right, management.
And a whole team that we, you know, kind of, oh, we wanted nothing about it. All right, you play emergency manager guy all the time. Then you get into like, are you gonna keep them overnight?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And then you have to watch, and you definitely don't wanna get into doing anything with any type of shelter or setting up an actual shelter because you you're gonna have to do background checks on people and everything like that. Um, the Red Cross, if you would need some short service shelter, you can reach out to the Red Cross and they would, they would go ahead and man it and do all the organization all that. Or maybe somebody actually has a seat for a long time.
But that would probably happen at the high, at the high school, not in the library or here. Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess in a less formal way, like that, that would be a formal um, emergency management decision and an action, right? But in the meat, like, we seem to be having more of these storms and outages and so just out of concern, I guess, maybe we could do reminders or something like that's how I was thinking about it, whether it's on the Facebook page or, and again, people without power, but but, you know, where we can give, right, where we can give helpful reminders, hey, right, the library's open till nine, we tell them that or seek uh, family, just, I get nervous, especially for the elders and might not have some of these supports or, but if we can give them tips or suggestions for where to go, that places in touch that might have power, especially when there's people. Just a thought.
Also, um, I know this was an issue where Woods, but like when we closed Station Avenue, we divert traffic through the neighborhood. Particularly at, at a road like stations, bad on a good day. Tell that neighborhood well, uh, apparently it was just a real brutal time for that weekend. Can we, is there anything we can do with police there or?
I think, I don't think it's speed, given the the nature of that road. I think it was the volume thing. That they had going on there.
I mean, it's, yeah, like any neighborhood that experiences stuff, they think it's speed.
Yeah. I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, that's tough there because it's not like you have to go far back to, to go another way.
Yeah, nobody called me, you know, and said, like, I'm speeding through here. I think they recognized what was going on. As Commissioner Gillis was on there and I'm sure I would have heard from him. Actual speed going on.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's human nature, you get put at a dead end, you're ticked off, so you do the U-turn.
Yeah, I mean, if we found, we get word of it. Yeah, kind of presence out there, you're not gonna stay there. Not make sure that there's actually there. For lack of, if nothing else.
Well, I agree with, that's what I think your sentiment is, is we're gonna see more of these and just, just have maybe a little sharp our pencil on communication, um, once available.
Yeah, if it's informal, if it's informal options, yeah.
He's gotta make, he's gotta write.
Was the people were going through the barricade. They were taking it down or they were going over to the lawn of the guy, there's a, and the station. That, that was a big problem in the station. But those of us with generators could go on a list and get completed. And then my, my freezers and fridge got full and my neighbors had come in over for coffee and charging their devices and stuff.
I think a lot of that was going on, a lot of people. The Generacs aren't that loud, they're not loud, right? Oh, is it? Okay, and that's, um, natural gas?
But it hits, I kind of have hallmarks, so most of my houses on in the air conditioner.
Okay. All right, well, we'll be over your place.
So, yeah, so like, kind of like we do with the snow event where it's like, you know, if you have a driveway spacing, you know, your neighbor doesn't, like, we'll try and help your neighbor out.
Some general care.
Change generator, yeah. The library will just remind people, library's open.
Yeah.
Need a place to go. Because it's generally open until nine o'clock every night, with the exception of Friday closes at five and Saturday at five.
Is it worth, um, I mean, obviously it was a unique storm and I think we all can appreciate, uh, Pico's response and putting a lot of resources in. Uh, at the same time, is there anything we should be advocating for? Terms of like the, somebody mentioned the neighborhoods that go out quite easily and all the time, like, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Well, I just got a Pico survey in my email today, which I thought was interesting timing. So I answered that for the.
Survey of what?
Yeah.
Of their services.
Oh, really? Just generally there?
Yes, it was about.
How's your juice, Samina?
Yes, well, it was about how their, their communication, their response to, um, power outages, how often my power goes out.
Oh.
Um, and in general, how pleased am I with their cost? They asked about all these little subcategories cost. Um, yeah, I can.
Wonder if you got that at random or if everybody's gonna be getting.
I don't know.
I didn't get one.
I didn't get one.
It was in my email today.
I probably know you're nice.
That'd be good to see. Share that with us?
Yeah, um, well, I completed it.
Oh, you could, okay, forget it. Okay, no.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but I, I'll see what I can do. I have a squeaky wheel though, so perhaps, um, I don't know, but you'd think they wouldn't want my response, so I'm not sure.
But I mean, there's a mechanism to file complaints too, so if people were constantly going out, they really should submit that. Yeah, if we know a bunch of people, we can, they're passed that along.
Yeah, buying a generator is not a cheap event.
No.
You know, I mean, you're talking about five to seven thousand bucks if you're getting a whole house, you know, juicer or more, I don't even.
Right, and that's nice to have, but that's a separate issue from.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Issues that can be improved upon.
Yeah. Well, maybe if we get, if we're hearing from constituents in our ward that are complaining about outages with the frequency, we can at least direct them to that mechanism that they can make a complaint.
Yeah, does the township have a, a grid map from Pico?
I don't think they give that.
But we have access, or do you, when you wanna confirm a certain house and what outages they've had? You have access to that? Do you have to request that in Pico?
Pico outage map shows where the areas are, where people are.
It'll show history or do you look up your address?
That it'll show history.
Because I know you would provide.
Yeah, I can get that through our external affairs manager.
Okay.
Yeah, on the app, you don't get history, but you, during an event, you can get the outage map.
Yeah, I think there was a, a particular, uh, one that he had requested and
Yeah.
They basically gave him the history. Well, it was an outage in April of two twenty and da, 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 da.
Yeah.
Didn't quite match up with what the homeowner thought was happening.
Okay.
Assuming it was accurate, but.
Interesting. Well, they asked me in the survey how many times my power had gone out and I thought, you should know.
You should know, yeah.
Yeah.
Had you complained?
Um, I have, in the past, well, yeah, and the, after the last storm, I asked them to come out to, there was wire and there's branches hanging on wires.
Yeah.
So, and then they said they can, and that the utility pole in my yard looks like this now, so I'd like them to maybe put a new one. Um, they said they stopped by, but, and, and cleaned some things out, but it's clear that they did.
And, and your utilities come from the rear of your property? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Be on the lookout, see if you get a.
Okay, let's, let's circle back on that.
The next time that, I'll, I'll make sure Jamie knows and we have the newsletter coming out, so we can probably, you know, put something in.
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be great.
Um, last thing is, uh, Dottie Snyder, our Public Works Administrative Assistant, has decided to retire in June. So Ian and I are gonna meet to see about, um, backfilling that position. Whether it remains a full-time position or a part-time, that'd be determined. We'll talk about that. And then, um, we had promotion, uh, Joe Mellon is our new general mechanic. He was called a great dog and promoted, um, to municipal projects inspector. So that created a vacancy in his position. Joe moved up. There's now, uh, there's no longer. Uh, there's a, uh, equipment operator position that we posted internally. Uh, Ross Pike, uh, was placed in his app position and now there's a truck driver position that's open. So, lots of movement in Public Works.
I just wanted to point out that every, uh, paragraph in your report is block adjusted, being last names, not just.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Good catch, Ed.
I'll be throwing my book out.
I don't think Mike's gonna be able to sleep tonight.
Jamie's gonna hear about it tomorrow.
Now I'm gonna be looking much closer than that. Okay, all right, we got the bill listing, E, any questions on that? Yeah, Tab F, uh, zoning board. Uh, self-explanatory, a couple, um, one new case and the continued, um, case regarding the oil market. I thought those two cases were going to be consolidated into one.
They, they have been. I don't, I'm not, not sure they need to appear on the agenda this way, but they technically have been consolidated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions or comments on that? All right, one G. Uh, let's see, okay, the resolution, um, recognizing Asher, we'll do that Wednesday. That's great.
Guys, yeah, it'll be here.
Um, Asher also spoke at, um, high school graduation.
Uh, yeah.
Pretty cool. All right, H, uh, Parks and Recreation Professionals Day. For Friday, July eighteenth. Uh, we'll pass a resolution, um, recognizing that on Wednesday unless there's any major objections. There was a, um, concert that was associated with that. Correct? Friday the eighteenth, where did I read that?
Uh, yes, there is a, a concert that's being, um, done. I think it's sponsored by Dan Helwig Realtors. Um, it's on Parks and Rec Professionals Day.
Okay, where is that? What are those details?
It's gonna be at Cisco Parks.
Okay.
Soon it'll be at seven o'clock.
Where did I read about that?
It would have been a Park and Rec, um, maybe in the Park and Rec, uh, report.
Oh, that's probably it, yeah, yeah.
Was it like a fifties doo-wop at?
Yep.
Radiohead.
Yeah, is that something that's been advertised?
She has it out there with, um, Emily has it out there with, uh, the rest of the parks, so.
Okay.
Can we make an announcement on the Wednesday?
Kids concert performance with music with Gina.
Yeah.
Cisco Park gazebo. Actually, it's at ten AM to ten forty-five. We can make an announcement about that.
See, ten to ten forty-five?
Ten to ten forty-five AM.
Who's worn up for it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's where Pearl Chain.
Radiohead. Okay, uh, Tab I is recycling report. Any questions or comments there? Okay, and finally, um, almost finally, Tab J, Shade Tree Commission, we have uh, two people with their terms expiring. Do you wanna check with them? Do you know any details on that?
They both, I think, they, yeah, Craig checked and both Ann and Ted are happy to continue.
Okay, great. So we'll re-up them on Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay.
And then there's a second part to that as well.
Yep, and then there's a recommendation for two of the folks to fill, um, associate members. Is that the right word?
Uh, alternate.
Alternate, there you go.
Alternate positions.
Yeah, we've had some movement on our.
Aren't they called associates in the EAC?
Yes.
They're alternates, Shade Tree.
And they're alternates in civil service.
Do alternates vote and associates do not?
Alternates can vote in the absence of a regular member.
But associates cannot?
Never vote.
Associates never vote.
All right, so just different bylaws for those committees. All right, okay, I didn't realize it was, that distinction, okay. Um, all right, great, so we'll do that Wednesday unless there's any objections.
So do we just need to confirm that our, the two folks who have been, um, I guess, kind of functioning like associates, I would say, right, like they've been attending and coming to things with consistency. Um, do they need to be here or can we appoint them as alternate?
You're just gonna.
They don't have to be there. Uh, they're obviously willing to do it, they're aware of this thing.
Participating for about a year now.
That's great.
Yeah.
That's great, okay. Yeah, they don't have to come Wednesday, unless they want to. All right, that's the book.
It's amazing. I may have. Well, you have a couple of things in your folders tonight. Uh, one of what Pete had brought up earlier today about the local use of radar. Yeah, I gave you an update as to where the state is on that. Essentially, it's nowhere at the moment, but it's an update. Um, the other thing is you've got a warm notice, um, from Public Health Management Corporation, uh, regarding the Parker Valley campus and in particular, this is related to the closure of the schoolhouse daycare program, which, um, most of you are aware of from last week, there was social media activity on it and subsequently, you know, emailing, you know. What do we know about this? Answer was not a lot, but found out, you know, PHMC made the decision that the trust, which owns the property, they're confused by it, befuddled by it, uh, pick your word. They'd like to see it stay in operation. They think it's a profitable endeavor, it's sustained itself, but they don't control it.
So who, who was, would put out the RFP? Would it be the?
So, yeah, the, the, the notice mentions in RFP.
Sounds like it's, uh.
PHMC.
PHMC.
But the question is, they have the authority to do that.
I thought it was children. I'm confused. I thought that they, yeah, that.
Children's aid and the PHMC or PHMC, uh, essentially became the, um, beneficiary, they're, they're one in the same since, I guess, two thousand and eighteen.
But are they one in the same or are they partners?
So it's, it's a parent subsidiary.
Okay.
So PHMC is the parent and CVCA is the subsidiary. That's how I understood it from our call.
Right, but C, CVCA was, was there prior.
Correct.
Yes.
So PHMC came in.
The operator.
PHMC was brought in as an operator. With the thought that the additional programming that they offered and the economies of scale that they brought to the table were gonna help CVCA, um, address the headwinds that were, they were facing in that, you know, field.
But essentially they merged in the fact that CVCA does not independently exist without them at this point.
That's the question, I think, and if you can, you read the. That's the question, I think, and if you can, you read the, uh, petition before, I think that's the.
I think that's an open.
Before, yeah.
That's an, that's an open question, I think, in the, in the. Orphans Court litigation.
Okay, yeah.
But we're not aware of any RFPs or plans to explore another operator coming in.
No, uh, but. If. Someone's aware of somebody that wants to operate the school. Uh, I heard from both Jeff Ider, who's one of the trustees, and Malcolm Yeats, who I think I shared with you an email that I got from him. Um. Send them PHMC what?
What was his company that he had on his?
He used to work for PHMC and then I think he went out as a consultant on his own and has his own, like. Marketing slash media.
I was gonna say, is he like their?
Like their PR guy.
Yeah, he's their PR guy. He's their bad news delivery guy.
Thursday before holiday.
Yeah. It's a lot of employees, though.
Yes, but, yeah, I can't imagine that there's fifty-one employees at the schoolhouse right now. I mean. That would shock me. I mean, your kids went there, do you think?
I don't know, it, it seemed high, but.
But you, you, you can't have, you can't be short-staffed ever.
No, right.
I mean, I know we have a lot of employees.
Rooms, right, right, they have a lot of separate rooms, they have multiple people per room, and then they have administrative staff. They probably have the extra people that come in for their summer camps. Right, things like that, so perhaps it's not.
I mean, are they including non-on-site employees in that? I mean.
No, I think they talked about the Flower Town Campus specifically.
Yeah, they do, at fifty-one. Oh, no, I'm sorry, fifteen and seventy-one, that's combined.
Yeah, it still seems like a lot.
That's keeping them to more. But there's no grounds.
Just let it up there.
They haven't been doing anything. Yeah.
Families did request a, um, meeting with PHMC, so I'm curious if that will actually happen, but they did request that.
How long did we ask for a meeting? And then we had a meeting. Date.
We're so close.
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours away from it.
This, this family of the daycare.
I'm sorry.
Families of the daycare.
Families of daycare, yeah, um, led by, uh, I mean, organized by a couple.
How many families were there? Roughly.
I don't know how many families, I, I mean, there's, there's over a hundred kids or right around a hundred kids, I mean, obviously sibling groups in there, but. Um, I know a letter was written, um. To PHMC asking for specific. Uh, information and for an in-person meeting. Um, the letter was acknowledged by PHMC and said information was forthcoming and. And gave a nod to the possibility of a meeting without scheduling one.
You have any other items, Mike? You know. Um. Reminder that, uh, we're in summer attire. Business casual Wednesday. Um, I have one other question. I think you may, you may have almost answered it or did answer it. Uh, I just want to make sure I'm always clear on it. That's the, um. Traffic citations, numbers?
It includes warnings and actual citations.
Right. So the. But then the numbers by the traffic safety unit are separate from the entire. Patrol.
Correct.
Right, okay, so like, for example, it says. Traffic Safety Unit issued a total of eighteen citations. Um. And twenty warnings, so that's.
Thirty.
You know, thirty-eight moving violations. But. Um, but in the. Uh, I apologize if I'm repeating this issue. Every time I look at it, I guess I get, uh, making sure I'm incorrect. But if you look at the motor, motor vehicle. Violations total on the chart, you'll see that there's many more. Moving violation. For example, two hundred and eighty. In, in the month.
This month.
So that number encompasses all patrol. Officers. Plus the traffic safety.
I believe so.
And traffic safety numbers are limited if that's the specific unit.
Correct.
All right, okay.
Of which there's, there's three of them versus the. Twenty-seven.
Yep.
Other patrol officers.
Okay.
Or subtracted twenty-four patrol officers. Fifty-five.
Yeah.
Uh, also want to remind you, August thirteenth, we have a pension investment meeting. Um. That'll be at five o'clock. I'll ordering. Dinner sandwiches, something. You know, the meeting right afterwards.
Hmm.
Um, there's any special dietary requests, but yes.
August thirteenth.
Exclusions.
No beef, no beef.
No beef.
Five o'clock, did you say?
Yes.
Thank you. In person here.
Yep.
Five o'clock?
Yep.
Great. Any other non-executive items?
I, uh, just, just a general question about how our electric, all-electric police car is doing.
Uh, Chief Pico and Detective Craig and Lieutenant Mersky took it today to. A truck somewhere, they took the electric truck. To meeting with the Attorney General.
Who?
Um. And a bunch of other, like, regional, um. Municipal police departments and. Including those from Delaware County, Chester County, Bucks County, Montgomery County. Uh. I don't know where the meeting was held, but he was very impressed with the truck. It was his first time.
Little Pico?
Pico, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. So, well, they're, they're, I think they're very impressive vehicles.
He said it was big.
Big, yeah, fast.
No gear shifting? Just goes.
No gear shifting.
He thought it was great.
Yeah, okay, good.
Nice. Do we have any, uh, specific executive items?
None.
Um. The, uh, the rent, uh, we should, do we need to talk about that? Have we have a date?
Back.
Okay. All right. So I guess we can adjourn. Any other questions? Raymond? Yeah.
Yeah, just so it gets captured, otherwise it won't be.
Okay, so I was in contact with Ms. Taylor about this, but just, um, kind of throwing around ideas about like the project that I'll be doing this summer. Um, I know one of the commissioners had brought up, like, brought up. Me doing a mural here, so just like, I guess, just kind of workshopping or like keeping in mind anything that you would want me to do this summer. Yeah.
Great, awesome.
Yeah, we had exchanged emails earlier today and. Sophia asked about, you know, what, what kind of a project do you think I could do? I asked, well, what are some of the things you want to? Get involved with, what, what interests you?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so she put forth the mural project with John, you know, to Shane, he's right. You're right at the moment, you, you could probably connect on that. Uh, and then the other thing was, um, you said that, um, you. You like surveys, like, like to do a survey, um, so maybe we can. Come up with either a park and recreation type survey or something. Pete looks like he has an idea.
I have, I have an idea.
Let's hear it.
Um. Let's hear it.
Let's hear it, right, right. So, uh, more and more people in the township are putting. Uh, photobotanic, uh, panels on their, you know, on their roofs and their houses, right? To, uh, to lighten their load on the electric grid and stuff like that. I, I don't know whether we've ever had a survey. To see how satisfied people are or if, if, if it's working or do we have any idea how many kilowatts we're. Producing or have the potential to produce, how many, how many pounds of, uh, you know, CO2 we're not. Pumping into the, uh, atmosphere, uh, you know, I would, I think, I would find that as a very worthwhile, uh. Or the EAC would probably, uh, agree with that, maybe, uh.
It's a great idea.
Inquiring minds.
Yeah, inquiring minds.
How's that strike you?
Uh, absolutely, fascinating. Is there someone that would be?
Because the, because the township should be the depository of all that information. They should have pulled permits for all those.
We should know the ones who have full permits or, and we can target them. With, uh, a mailing.
And with a questionnaire or something, you know, how's it, when'd you put it in? How's it going? You know, are you saving any money?
What kind of savings are you saving?
What kind, you know, was it as promised or?
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, I think that would be a well-worth, uh, uh, summer project, you know?
Really?
Then you start brainstorming some of those example questions that would be part of that.
Well, we can probably, uh. Right.
The EAC should.
Yeah, work with the EAC. Work with the EAC and Joy is the solar guru and people abroad.